Apply with. Sure, it's certainly going to miss some things and that's part of tonight is to work out what may be missing from it. And it's probably clear that clarifying the guidelines on who is eligible is one of those things. We certainly talked about the flyer at the last meeting. So again, we've done some research and seen what other councils are doing and have come up with with a draft flyer that we can see what we think about tonight. The main other part of the LGA meeting was just hearing from other councils, hearing what they were doing. There was a lot of discussion about how you can help your communities in other ways. Purchasing was a focus with stimulus projects, looking at your local spend, even trying to pay your creditors quicker than we currently do, especially the local ones. Little bit of talk about community leases and loans and what may be done, what they're perhaps doing in that space. There was some waivers going on. There's a range of questions that came out of that that we need to consider as well. Debt collection, do we keep up with debt collection? Do we look at our fines and interest? Some councils have already made decisions to waive their fines and interest for a period of time. Most of them around six months. What our rate rise will be in the budget process. Certainly, a lot of the metropolitan councils appeared to be going for a 0%, but the G A certainly didn't recommend that to all the councils who felt they couldn't afford that in their modeling of their long-term financial plan. So that's something we need to consider too. I think that sort of covers, you know, just a brief overview of the meeting last Thursday. And there was certainly some, you know, a range of good ideas that came from that and other information that's come out from other councils since that we might need to consider.
Thanks, David. I think we've just got to be a little bit mindful of how all this is going to work. We don't want to overload our staff with a lot of work. I think we've just got to be mindful of that as we go forward. But obviously, there's going to be some hardship out there. So has anyone got any questions to David on that meeting? David or Colin or myself might be able to answer it. But I think it's also come out that council can't take all of the pain. Try and do as much as we can.
Here we go.
Here we go. Welcome Cathy.
Speak up Cathy.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye Cathy.
Bye.
You with us Cathy?
Yep, before I nearly dropped the iPad. Yes, I can see you all.
Where we're at Cathy is David's just give us a bit of a rundown on the on the document that we've been presented with tonight.
Yeah.
Probably will just continue on. And if you've got any questions to please ask. I've just asked for questions today with Colin and myself on the meeting last Thursday. Just, I've got all of you on the screen. So if you want to talk, just same rules as last time, wave your hand and I'll attempt to get to you. I'd like everyone to have some input, please. Questions? No?
Any questions?
Must be some. I think there's a, you look at the impact with zero rate rises, but I think we'll do deal with the quarterly flyer and our current rates. That's the burning point now. And Colin, the hardship policy we'll be looking at on Tuesday night if we're far enough down the track with it. Is that correct?
If, sorry Mr. Mayor, the hardship policy, if council wants to go down that track, we will do the amendments. There's a series of questions that come up through that policy. Just hang on.
Are you still, are you still here Colin?
Can you hear me or not?
Yes, I can. None. Yes.
Okay. Saying my microphone was still muted, but I thought I was talking. So the hardship policy that we gave out the other night, if you want to go down that track, that policy becomes for the long term. It's just not for this little situation now. So there's a series of questions in there that we would go through and bring back a draft with what we think it should be for Tuesday night. We need a bit more time to do that one, if council wants to go down that way.
I think we probably need a hardship policy most, a lot of other council have got them, have that correct Colin?
Yeah, true. Yes, they do.
And like we've got a hardship policy for our CWMS, that sort of thing. So I think it's probably worth looking at, but I'm not going to panic too much if staff haven't got it up by Tuesday night. I think now, this policy now is the one that's going to cause us the most grief just at this stage. So I think we're looking for a way forward with this policy here tonight. I saw some other attachments that come out, another email that come out with a few different scenarios. We are all around that one this afternoon.
Yeah.
I saw Merv's question. I haven't, I haven't looked since.
Sorry, there was, there was another email coming out with a few different dot points. I think that come from David, that was correct.
Yes.
Yep. Ian, did you want to comment?
I just, I said that question to David or Colin and just asking around the come off entitlement type of thing.
Yeah.
Is that worded? But yeah, David, yeah, gave, presented some extra words and I thought that gave a bit more meaning around what was actually meant.
Yep. So if people want to go back to David's email this afternoon and just have a quick look at that, it might pay to do that, probably.
Excuse me, people who are technologically better off than me, can I do that and stay in the meeting? I've got, I've got the Zoom meeting up to council iPad.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, look, you can, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yep.
Yeah, you can just flick back to your emails and then just, when you want to come back to the Zoom, just tap on Zoom. But the email just, basically what it defines is the the things the Commonwealth's putting out. So it's basically what you qualify for in Commonwealth assistance. And there's four paragraphs in there. One of them needs a bit of editing because we don't currently have a policy, a hardship policy. But beyond that, it just defines the the various stuff that it would qualify. Basically, it would qualify you to apply for this if you apply for any, if you qualify for any assistance from the Commonwealth, then you would qualify for assistance from council. That was one of the files.
What I'll do Ben is I'll get David, if you're there, please to run through those four. I think there was four dot points, was it David?
Yes.
If you can just run through those please for ones that haven't seen them.
Sure. Okay. So just, just perhaps to explain the draft policy that went out was based on some others that had been seen around the place. And we did add some words about, we certainly knew we wanted to, applicants to meet those Commonwealth criteria. But at that point in getting the agenda out, we hadn't actually come across that criteria. Because we did, one thing that was said the other day was the application should be as simple as possible. So we had tried to fit with that. But with those questions that came out today, it became clear that we did probably need some more criteria. And with it being a draft, we can certainly add those in. So I'll start reading through those. So the first one is upon the application of any rate payer that has become unemployed, underemployed and is receiving a payment from the government as a result of COVID-19, they will be provided the option to defer all rates and charges payments for that has six months concluding in September. Now, we would obviously adjust that to what our preferred timeframe is. So at the moment in our draft, we have to the beginning of December. The second line or point is upon the application of any rate payer where their business has failed or is in a hardship as defined in the policy. Now that bit would come out because that's what Ben just mentioned, we don't currently have the policy. And is receiving a payment from the government as a result of COVID-19. Again, they will be provided the option to defer all rates and charges payments for the period of time to the start of December. The third point, upon the application of any rate payer who may not qualify for government assistance and upon provision of reasonable evidence, the chief executive officer can provide the option to defer all rates and charges payments for that period of time. And the fourth point is in accordance with all of the above options, will be fine and interest free during the term of the deferred payment. So no fines and interest.
All right. Thanks David. Any questions, any questions on that please? All right. So is there further questions please?
Yes.
Yeah, I just had one question about that first stimulus that came out. Where the government gave money to people that weren't actually directly affected. So do they actually qualify under that wording? Because I think about like the pensioners and the, the previous unemployed. They weren't actually too affected by this. They've just got extra money to stimulate the economy. So as in the, the not any worse off views of the pandemic.
David first, please, then Ben.
Yeah, I certainly know what Ian's saying there. And in the first point, it talks about becoming unemployed, underemployed or receiving a payment from the government as a result of COVID-19. So I think certainly you could interpret that those additional payments to people already on government benefits were as a result of COVID-19. I'm not sure that that perhaps is the intent of this, but you could interpret it that way.
Yeah, all right. Ben, then Cathy?
Yeah, look, I wouldn't have interpreted it that way. That was, that was two lots of stimulus for pensioners, invalid pensioners, unemployed. But the, the job seeker and the job keeper and, and the other payments that are businesses available to business, business support payments would be the, the ones that we're really targeting, I would think. I mean, honestly, if you, if you're on a retired on an age pension, you've actually received $1,500 more than you would normally receive. So you would be, it wouldn't be in your interest anyway to try and defer your rates. It's still a bill you're going to have to pay. And it's not who we're targeting this at. We're targeting it at people that have potentially lost their income or their businesses closed or their businesses suffered a significant reduction in income because there's no passing trade and, and there's no accommodation in accommodation businesses and all the rest of it. So I mean, I think that's where we're aiming. I think that was what everyone sort of was aiming at in their discussions at the previous meeting. So I think that's what we might target.
Cathy?
Yes, I totally agree with Ben and as a pensioner myself. It, I'm not sure that we should have actually had the, the payment that we did get. We've only had half Ben.
You've spent it.
Yeah, bills. Have strictures on that saying that it should be spent on that, not like the baby bonus a few years ago. But yeah, I would have felt it was targeting those that are unemployed in the businesses that are doing it tough. So it shouldn't apply to, unless there are circumstances where somebody in that boat would need to apply, in which case it would be taken on its normal merits.
And for Robertson?
Yeah, Dennis, I am quite happy with the four dot points. In particular, dot point 419 where that also covers people who are not on some payment from the government. So someone out there who's under hardship can also apply and talk to the chief executive officer to get that option carried through. So I'm quite happy with the four dot points.
All right. Any further comments?
No.
All right. Now, just with Valaclava, they haven't got any, it's just you apply and they're going to get overrun with, they're like, there's no, no criteria as to who can apply for their, their relief. I think they're, they're going to set themselves up for a lot of work there. So Colin or David, you got any further comments?
The only question I have would be, I'm taking point 418, that's the second one about businesses that has failed or is in hardship. We've got that letter from the dentists to have their rates, their fee deferred, their lease fee deferred. I would say that, that one there covers that, that we could defer their payment.
Yep, I would agree.
Was that deferred or waived Colin? I thought they initially asked them to be waived.
They, they wanted a rent free, which is waived, but I don't think we can do that. I think we need to pick up 418, which is just a deferment. And that's in line with all other rate payers then as well, not giving special attention to some of these businesses. So we're consistent with across the, across the community.
Totally agree.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a yes from most of the faces I can see. Yep.
Down from Ian.
Comment Leon?
Yeah, particularly with the dentist, it was closed down by the government. There is nothing to do about that. It's a, it's a corporate, it's a, it's a business that we want to keep open here in the town. And you know, I can't see any reason why they should pay any rent while they're out of business.
Council Brown?
Look, you can hold the same argument for the hotels that have been closed down by the government and we're not offering to waive their rates. The, they leased the building, they don't pay rates on it. So I mean, I think offering them a deferral is exactly the same sort of support we're giving to other businesses in the community. And, and I don't see why, I think if we gave one business a we forgave their, their lease and then we only deferred the rates for other businesses, it would be seen to be very unfair.
Council Webb?
I lost it. I'll come back to it.
All right. Any further comments?
Dennis, if I could just make one other comment. The Wakefield Regional Council did look at support for community organizations or sporting club. Are we going to take this into account at all or will we just look at the case by case? If one of the community organizations or sporting clubs apply for some sort of deferment.
Any comments? Council Brown?
My, my comment would be, I think for football clubs, I don't think we're, we're paying a lot of players and we're not paying coaches and, and any council charge that comes for them for using the ovals fairly insignificant. The bowls clubs have actually had their bowl season and one would expect that by the time we get around the next bowl season, things will be up and running again. Whereas there is a few things in the community that perhaps could be struggling a bit. The, the potentially the Gladstone and Laura Caravan Park that would be, you know, wouldn't be getting very much business at the moment. And they have, yeah, they've all closed, that's right. That, so they're basically some of, they've got loans to service with council and stuff like that. They're, they're probably not in the rate boat, but they've probably got loans in that that are with council that we may have to consider something on, on application, I would think. But it's sort of, it's not covered by what we're moving to tonight. But we would, I would expect that council would look reasonably at those, those community organizations upon application with their, their loan servicing, et cetera. You know, interest is relatively cheap at the moment. So we would have some capacity to at least help in some way there. There might be other sporting groups around that have some other concerns that I'm not, you know, particularly aware of in, in other communities. I don't, I don't think we've got any particular ones in, in sporting, but there could well be some in, in Jamestown where they've got loans to service. And if they haven't got, you know, sufficient funds, we're going to have to look at helping in some way.
Council Moore?
Yes, the Jamestown Lawn Tennis Club, they had to cancel their Easter tournament, which is their main profit driver, I suppose. And they've been loaned to council for 27,000. They might be a little bit at strike. So I'm one that will have to think very closely about.
Dennis, can I make comment?
Yes Colin.
Sorry. Who can go first? Let Sue go first.
Sorry.
Has the tennis club, has the tennis club looked at the $5,000 event compensation from South Australian Tourism Commission?
I would have no idea. I don't.
Yeah, that, that's the moment, but it closes tomorrow. So it might be worth sending an email fairly smartly.
I would please speak, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilor Skarmen. In relation to that, I saw that information came out the other day. That's more in relation to it's events that are registered with the ATDW, which is Australian Tourism Data Warehouse. So it doesn't, those types of the, your smaller sporting types of events don't qualify unfortunately. Whereas I'm quite sure something like the Folk Fair would be very much in that category. But I guess, I'm not sure with some of their sporting groups, but we've probably been official with a number that through some of the community grant programs and a lot of solar's going on. So some of them through not having activity have actually got some revenue coming in. Or be it not a lot, but it's a lot nicer than having a bill. Thank you.
Dennis, if I can comment now? With all that summary there, I, I think the indication is that we don't put anything in place via a recommendation or anything, that we just treat, if someone contacts me about this sort of stuff, we, we treat it case by case and we bring it to council for a decision on each different decision. We're doing it that way rather than trying to bulk them all together at the same time.
Yeah. Denise?
Um, and based on the, I was going to come back to the conversation about the dentist. Like I went back to my notes and see that it's over a thousand dollars a month that the dentist is paying. I'm wondering if we don't want to forgive all of that, so to speak. Maybe ask for a half rent to keep them interested and keep them in the community. I don't know the dentist, I don't use that dentist, but I believe it's a really it's a good service to keep in your community. It's as simple as that. And so I'm wondering whether that's one of those cases where you might come back. Again, if they say, if, if, you know, if this is the, the answer, then we're out of here. We as a council probably need to think about that fairly carefully.
Council Webb?
Wouldn't they qualify for any sort of government assistance and seeing they were closed down by the government? In which case they, it would well and truly be covered.
But they're still going to live.
Yeah, well, how far the payment spread?
I think in this situation, if, if we can make it clear that they can come to the CEO and ask for some sort of compensation, I think that's where we've got to go. The opportunity is there for them if this goes through. Just on, on Wakefield. They, I think they've put up 870,000 is what I think it's going to cost them. They have very little debt, less than a million dollar debt. There's $200,000 of community grant money that they're putting straight back into this. There, the, the community is going to be $200,000 short. And they, they don't expect, as I said, anywhere near that 870,000 to come, come out of that. So that's, that's a fair, like 200,000 of their community grant funding just, just stopped. So that's, that's going to hurt a few community groups as well. So, and they're going to look at paying power and water and that sort of thing for their sporting clubs. Whereas we've got, apart from sporting, we've got treated water on our ovals. We've got many solar panels, as someone mentioned a while ago. So yeah, I think we're, we're covering our sporting communities pretty well, really. All right. Just if there's any other managers or staff that I haven't got their, their photo up here. If they want to talk, just yell loudly, please, and then we, if you'll be able to hear. Thank you. Should have said that before. But all right. So is there any further questions before we adopt these policies, if that's what we've got to do Colin?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. The idea is if you adopt some of these recommendations with the criteria, you do that, then move on to looking at, there's a sort of like a flyer we talked about after that as well. So the first step is making, making a recommendation on how you want to treat the issue.
All right. So anyone prepared to move anything or Council Brown?
Look, I think we, we need to move firstly on what, what we're offering. And, and that is a deferral for up to six months with no fines and no interest. And then we need to clarify the criteria around what qualifies you to apply for that. That would be my way of thinking. We need to go forward with this. And then we look at the draft of the flyer and the, and the application separately. But we need to make a decision that we're going to offer this to the community as a motion. And, and then the those key dot points that, that how you qualify for assistance.
Criteria.
Council Skarmen?
You said six months, but earlier we were talking about the beginning of December. We probably need to sort out the date. And just a small point with the the document to be sent out on the bottom of page. The first page, encourage you to look out for one another, that sort of stuff. Is it worth putting links to Beyond Blue or something along those lines?
Colin, any comments?
What we were trying to do, we was trying to do a one-page flyer. And trying to get every, every And trying to get everything, every goes in that, so David worked around those guidelines we gave him. So, yes, it'd be nice, but it's going to be hard. David, you're, there, you, you wouldn't be able to fit it on. It's too small a writing, isn't it, at this stage?
If, if it was just another half, uh, half a line or one line, we could probably squeeze it in.
Yeah, that's about it. Yeah.
I, I appreciate that, Sue, but I think there's probably enough of information out there um, already on those, uh, organisations that are probably run off their feet this, at this stage. But that's only my opinion. If, if councils, councillors would like that on there, well, that'd be good. Up to you. Any comments?
There's no room.
Room, there's no room. All right. All right, um, now this will be reviewed in six months. That correct? councillor Pollard, you got a comment?
Are, are we, are we looking at these documents yet?
You're looking at, trying to do a recommendation first, then the documents after that.
Yeah.
I'll sit down then.
All right.
So.
councillor Brown, please.
I, I, I will move that we offer that six-month deferral of rates with no interest and no fines.
So that's the first part.
As a concise motion.
Yep.
And then as part two to that motion.
Hang on, just, just.
So six months deferral of rates and no fines and interest.
No, no fines and no interest to apply.
No fines and interest to apply. Yep, all right.
Right, Paula, that's part one. Part two is those four dot points in that email that everybody's seen.
Yep.
With the amendment deleting the words around the, where it refers to the policy.
The hardship policy, Ben.
Yeah, because we don't have it yet.
That's, that was in, uh, four eighteen.
Do you want me to go? I, I don't know whether I can read them out.
No.
I haven't got the email on my screen because it's on my iPad.
David, you there? That, what you and councillor Brown were talking about, that is in four eighteen, isn't it? To take away the hardship. Is that what we?
Correct. Yep.
Yeah.
So.
Now, of course, those numberings are probably a hangover from where we found them.
Yeah, I, I understand that. So it's, it's just the four key dot points. I'm not worried about the numberings. But the four key dot points excluding those words referring to a policy um, that everybody's read. I mean, I, I could read them all, I can't read them all out because I haven't got them. But, but they define, they, they need to define how people, who qualifies to apply.
Just also, Ben, with the amendment of the new date.
Yes, yes. Yeah, getting the dates to, to fall in line with our dates, you agree? Yeah.
David, did you have a date that you looked at already?
Yes, the date we were looking at was the first of December. The reason we were looking at that, and, and again, it was based on what we'd seen some others do. But it gets us to, gets us past the, the next quarter in June, the first quarter in September, and brings us to the, around the due date of the second quarter of next financial year.
Yeah.
So in fact, it's seven months for us, not six months.
Yes.
Yep.
councillor Pollard.
So, so is what we're saying that, uh, in December, they will owe three quarters of the rates, of a year's rates?
Yes.
They may do, yes.
The, the only concern I have with, and that's why I was looking at these documents, is they go on as though we know what we mean. They're not highlighting things like deferral, which is, which is what it is. I mean, at the end of the period, they're going to owe three lots of, three quarters of rates. I think it's a bit of a scam myself, but, you know, um, it really doesn't mean much. It'll just get people perhaps further behind than they, they would like to be. So I, I just think that, um, that needs to be clearer. That there are some downsides to all this. And the downside, if you don't want to put it in concise words, then it must be highlighted in there. That it is only a deferral.
councillor Webb.
I agree, I agree with Leon on that. Uh, if it could also state that, um, continued payment, even at a reduced rate. Um, and also, uh, you know, if you stress that, you know, payment in full at the end of that six months, that should be enough to, uh, pull them into line. Just so, yeah, because for people you do need to spell it out, otherwise they'll take, uh, all they can and run with it.
councillor Pollard, I think you got a hand up.
Yep. It's a bit hard to see, isn't it? Do I keep disappearing?
Yep. Everyone else is, everyone else is fine. You're the only one.
Yep, you've got magical powers. Okay. In the second paragraph of the flyer, there is a, a sentence there which is a bit lumpy. Um, ongoing small payments that can still be made during the deferral period are encouraged. Yeah, I think if that was, that's one place where it should be, uh, it could be expressed a little better. I'm not a wordsmith, but that to me was pretty hard to understand the first time I read it.
Over of the motion, Ben, you got a comment?
Uh, yeah, look, my comment is that I'm not trying to put the flyer in the motion. I'm trying to get a concise motion to put into the, to the minutes. I accept that the, the flyer is going to shell, um, flesh this out a little bit more, which it should. And yes, it should, I take on all the points, but I wasn't going to move a motion that had all those points in it. Um, I expect that the flyer basically covers all, everything that's been suggested. The flyer does cover to a degree. It, I accept that Leon might think that the, the wording could be different. That's fine. And I'm, uh, the flyer that goes out will explain what councils moved tonight. And, um, it, it will explain where, where people are going to be. And, and I mean, with offering a deferment for six months now, none of us know where it's going to land in six months' time. And, um, and we may, may have to make, um, you know, further, we may have to do much more. And, and as things evolve over the next period of six months, we will be in a better position to know because, quite honestly, I don't think anybody in the country knows where we're going to be in six months' time.
Thanks for that, Ben. So we will deal with the flyer, the fine print after this. So we'll do this motion now. Is anyone prepared to second councillor Brown's motion? Um, Leon's got a hand up and.
Yeah, for a question, I've got it up for a question.
Well, I'll take, take a second by councillor Robertson, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
And a question councillor Pollard?
I thought there was a third string to this bow, that's all. Uh, we've covered, um, the fact that it's going to happen. We've covered the criteria correctly. If I'm wrong, I haven't got those four points. So is that right, Ben? You, your movement, so there's a, there is the fact that it's going to happen. There is the criteria under which it can happen. But then there's a secondary criteria about, uh, rents and leases. Uh, is that going to be handled separately?
Uh, can I just comment that on?
Yes, Colin.
Under the second dot point, it talked about businesses. All right, so that was how we'd get rid, that we'd talk about the business ones. But we also said the community organisation or sporting ones would be treated on a case-by-case basis, brought back to council. So that didn't need to be in that, that motion, unless you want to do it differently now.
No, that's, that's okay. I, I, I haven't got the points here, so I'm not really sure what it covers. And I know David read them out, but, uh, couldn't digest it all in one hit like that.
Yep, okay.
Uh, I, I think, I think if you had the document there, councillor Pollard, you'd, you'd be okay with it. Um, so Colin, that's been seconded by councillor Robertson. You got that?
Yes, Paul has got it, yep.
Yep, thanks Paula. Any further questions before we put that to a vote? If not, all those in favour? Against? That is carried. Thank you. Right, the next part is to do, uh, to do with the flyer that goes out. Is that correct? Colin?
Yes.
Right.
David, David can make the comment on that one. He's put it together with his staff. So the, the intent, David, what was that about?
Sure, um, so at the meeting last week, we did talk about getting a flyer information out with the fourth quarter rate notices. So we, we have held off on that process for this meeting. Um, and obviously the outcome of the LGA meeting last week. So a flyer, a one-page, letterhead-type flyer has been drafted up. It talks about basically the result of the meeting tonight and the deferment option of rates. Um, that's the key point out of everything. There's a bit of fluffy stuff around it to talk about what else council is up to. Um, and, um, we, we have had some discussions internally about how we can make this happen. It's pretty easy for the people that are already going to get a rate notice, um, to include this flyer. But we have come up with some ways that the, the people who don't normally get a notice because they've already paid their rates in full, will also get this. So we're, we're pretty clear that that has to happen because some of those people may, um, may still need um, to apply for this, um, ready for the first quarter next year.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, we're not going to get anyone who's paid their rates in full wanting their money back. Anything stupid like that going to happen?
I could not.
Let's try.
Not happening.
All right, I just thought I'd throw that one in. Any questions on, on what David is thinking about sending out?
I think, sorry, yes, um, I think that, uh, was it Leon's point about people realising that they do have to, they do have to in the end pay their rates in full, um, in December? That in the, the page two of the, of the, what we're calling the flyer, that, that, that sentence, ongoing small payments can still be made, um, and they are encouraged. I think would be good to bold that maybe so that people do pick that up more clearly. This is a way of, um, I don't know, are people going to read closely? Will they, will they? I think, I think that what's been written so far is, is, is really quite clear. But it's about the way people read. And whether they actually pick up all of the information that's, that's here for them.
I think, sorry, Colin, do you have a comment?
I just think picking up Denise and Leon's point, that anywhere where we've got the word deferral, it needs to be bold. Right, it's only a deferral. So if you, you just leave that to start with. And then our staff, when they are contacted, we explain, you know, in detail that this is only a deferment, that you still have to pay.
And that it would be wise to make ongoing payments, small payments, if you could.
Yes, correct.
Now, Ian was up first. Comment, Ian?
Uh, just on the last page, the legal declaration. I think it's quite clear there. It says defer the period ending on the first of December. So I think it's covered quite well.
councillor Webb was next.
Uh, yeah, in terms of the, um, uh, the flyer, there is nothing in there about the, you know, continued payments uh, being preferred. So, you know, with the, the space being as difficult as it is, they're, they're not going to see that unless they're going to receive that, see that application of deferral of rates, in which case it should be stressed on that one.
councillor Pollard?
Yeah, well, that, there is that one about the ongoing small payments. I think that could be put a lot better. It's what I commented on before. It should be something along the lines, it is, uh, to your benefit to continue to make payments, uh, small payments. So something like, so it doesn't turn to shit at the end. But, you know, you, you people would come up with something like that. But what you've got to do, we're all on the same wavelength. You've just got to, uh, make sure that it doesn't look as though it's too easy.
Hmm.
Because that's what people will take it as. The other thing is that in that document, there's no criteria about who should apply.
David, you.
You won't fit it in there either. So I don't know how you expect to handle that.
David, how are you handling it that way?
Can I, can I just clarify the difference in the documents?
Yes, David.
When we talk about the flyer on page six of the agenda, the flyer is a one-page only. Correct. That's the flyer that'll go on the rate notices. It's really just to point out that council has made this decision. The following pages are actually the application that would go on the website. That will not go out with the rate notices. So someone has to read the flyer and then they have to investigate further or, or they've rung us and contacted us and said they're having issues. Um, so they will then complete the application once they're aware of it. And that's the one that we need to insert the criteria that was in the last recommendation by way of tick boxes or something like that.
Thanks, David. Councillor Brown?
Uh, look, there, there was a point, I just can't find it, but it, it did mention somewhere, and it needs to be highlighted as well, that if, you know, if you're still in difficulty at the end of this period, then you need to in, enter into some sort of an arrangement with council. And, and I'm, I'm sure that's in there, David, but I just can't put my, I can't, I can't find it at the moment on, on.
Yeah, I can, I can help. That's in the second paragraph of the application. It's the same paragraph that refers to the ongoing small payments. Um, it touches on the concern we all have that someone would then have to pay three quarters of rates at the start of December. Um, it talks about reaching an alternate agreement, um, at the end of that period. So we are aware that, um, it could be an issue for some people deferring that, um, they've then got this big whack of rates to pay when that time comes. Um, and we may need to reach a further arrangement, more along the normal lines we have, um, with them. Or who knows where this ends up further down the track. Um, but we certainly do want to encourage those, any payments that can be trickled in along the way. Um, so that that's less, um, when that time comes around.
All right, thanks, David. Ben?
Um, David, do we have a, um, a setup where people do actually pay rates every, you know, every paycheck with a small direct debit? So they, the money comes in and they keep ahead of their quarterly payments? Do we, do we allow that?
Yes, we do.
All right, so that, that can be expanded if the need be down the track, as, as in the, as David was referring to then. All right, any further questions? Comments? Anyone prepared to move anything with the flyer? councillor Higgins?
Um, I move that we adopt the flyer, um, dated the 17th of April, 2020. Redeferral applications to be added to the rate notices to go out, um, this quarter.
Thank you.
Did I cover everything?
You got that, Paula? You're not broken. Second block. Seconded by councillor Scarmann?
Yes, I've got it, Dennis.
Thank you, Paula. Seconding councillor Scarmann? That correct, so? Councillor Pollard, comment?
Yeah, is that without any alteration? Wouldn't like to see it go out without any alteration, that's all.
So what do you want to alter?
Well.
Conversation.
Deferral, to be highlighted all the way through. And the, the ongoing small payments line be more sold better. It's not sold there at the moment. It needs to be sold better.
That's on the following one.
That's on the application, I think.
On the floor, that's on the floor, the second paragraph of the flyer.
Leon?
Sorry?
It's on the application, not the flyer.
If you'd like to go to the flyer, which is on page seven.
The flyer is page six, mate.
I think the sleep's all right. I just, I just think that those things, yeah, they're probably better in the, in the application. Sorry, sorry, I was on the wrong page.
Okay.
Been there most of my life.
Councillor Pollard, I think with councillor Higgins's motion, we would take what you say into effect anyway and make those changes automatically from what you say, rather than rolling them into a motion.
But I think the critical thing here is like, deferral's mentioned all the way through. I saw one document that basically said this is not a waiver of rates, but I don't think we need to put that in. It's, it's deferral, I don't know what else you can do, it's a deferral. So I think in this flyer and the application, I think, as Colin said, I take Leon's points, that "deferral" is a pretty important word. All right, any further questions, please? If not, all those in favour? Against? That is carried. Right, any further comments? Colin?
No, the only comment I'll make now is, I'm assuming, and we don't need a motion, is that you do want a hardship policy, and we'll try to bring that to the Tuesday council meeting.
Yes, please.
Denise?
Yes, I agree. My question is, what time is the meeting Tuesday? Like, is it the normal morning meeting, or are we doing meetings?
No, it was a nine o'clock, it's a normal ordinary council meeting at nine o'clock. But I did say Monday, I did say Tuesday night, sorry, I apologise. Normal nine o'clock.
Councillor Brown?
Have you found the policy you're deleting yet, Colin?
In these unprecedented times, I've decided that I do not have to refer to your statements. Okay, I'll take it on board, it's a good joke, yep.
Just remember, all this is being recorded, councillors.
Nothing untoward.
With the meeting tonight on my device at home, I've found it much easier than just having the small amount on the screen. I can see, only one that would normally be there is Gabby. All the rest are actually at the council meeting. So I think I will be continuing to do the meetings on my home device. And I'll have the agenda on my iPad, so that's working very well for me.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, Colin.
Can you see the faces of the staff, or are they videoed out at the moment?
I can see James's dial, only because it's his photo, but the rest are videoed out. So if I can turn their videos on.
Yep, you might be able to see them.
Yeah, Dennis, just commenting, I can't see any of the staff.
No, that's right. No, no one can, because we've turned them off. So you only have the nine on the screen for you at home to be able to see each other.
If you flick to the left move, you can see them now.
Yeah.
They're a fine bunch.
Oh, yes, I can, I can now, so what do you do?
Paul, are you in the Millennium Falcon?
I'm not, hadn't come up yet.
He doesn't, we've just gotta get him to turn it on, he's just.
Doesn't matter, he was here earlier, I know he's there.
I just wanna know where Paula is, because I'm in the same room and I'm not there.
It looks like Vegas or something like that.
David and me are in the same spot.
No, it looks like the Millennium Falcon from Star Wars.
Yes, that's correct, Cathy.
Councillor Scarmann?
Just a comment, the three with the backgrounds, they pixelate, whereas the rest of us in real-life space, it's a much clearer picture, just a comment.
That's correct, noticed that. So Paula, you got, you're flashing around in the background there, something's happening anyway. And Leon, yours has been a bit the same as well?
Yep, and Ben's, and Cathy's. I just tried to get rid of it, but it wouldn't go, so that doesn't matter.
All right.
Anne's is the one that isn't pixelating.
Yeah, I've got a background. But it's, yeah, it doesn't seem to be pixelating.
All right, any further comments? Colin?
No. You'll have it out tomorrow, lunchtime.
Sorry, you dodged it there.
We'll have it out after lunch tomorrow.
Got it. Councillor Pollard?
So we're not dealing with the other items that are in here?
Sorry?
We're not dealing with the other items that were in here?
What are they?
The, the other discussion points.
Rates, lease, fee relief.
The other discussion points. Rate, rate rise. I mean, obviously, the staff need something to work to with their budget at some stage. And the sooner the better, because we're bloody near May now.
They're, they're not actually in the agenda.
They're not, they're not in the agenda, Ben?
I'm looking at the agenda, they're not in the agenda. We can only deal with what's in the agenda.
I don't know how you left-wingers can't understand stuff when you really, you just, you just turn stuff into shit every time.
Colin, you got a comment, please, or David?
Just the, the discussion that David brought out was only about what came through the Zoom meeting and the information. All we wanted to discuss really was how we got to the point of moving that first motion about rate and lease fee relief, not really going into everything else. That just gave you some background. When you talk about budgets, we have, we are developing a budget now. And I've asked David to also do a 0% increase one to show you all that, as when we get through the budget process. So we will develop several scenarios, not just one scenario to present. I think there's up to about five we can present to you that look at different percentage increases. That'll be in the next couple of weeks. We're about two weeks behind in our budget timeline at the moment with all the COVID-19 stuff we've had to deal with, but we'll be soon back on track with budgets.
Thank you for that comment. All right, so once again, there's no further discussion. Thank you to the staff for the work that they've done to get us to this stage tonight. And if we don't talk in between now and then, we'll see you on Tuesday morning. And I'll declare the meeting closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye-bye.